Ben Philbrook, Gardner Young, Lynn Conway, and Ryan DC, and Chuck Sheehan. Chuck Sheehan, sorry. Chuck Sheehan, it's your turn to fill in. Sorry, Ryan.
No worries.
He's the next one on the list. Fred Dykman is absent. Do I hear a motion on the minutes of the previous meeting?
Make the motion to approve the minutes. They're very well done.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, ayes have it. Administrative review, Keith?
Yeah, item 4D1 is the administrative review item for consideration of extension of the temporary policy regarding zoning enforcement and permitting during the COVID-19 pandemic. We're extending this further to March 1st, 2001. Back on May 12th, the commission approved this temp policy. It provides relief from different areas during the pandemic, primarily to allow outdoor seating by restaurants, giving businesses a brief signage, retail display boards, and for businesses that might need this relief during the pandemic. The state did an emergency order which covers a lot of the same ground that's due to expire February 9th. Felt it was appropriate to go to March 1st to before it warms up again, just to throughout the winter.
Any discussion on this?
Would it be worth, this is Ben, would it be worthwhile of you pushing it out further than that, like till May 1st?
Yeah, and this is Ryan, just if I can add, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
In my other job, I do know the federal emergency has been extended another 90 days, so that'll be till April 20th. So maybe May 1st would make more sense.
That's fine. Anyone else have a discussion on it?
And no objection here.
All those in favor?
Wait, wait, wait. So we're gonna, just so we know we're voting.
May 1st.
We're voting on a proposal that is now amended to May 1st. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make, just make sure the minutes are correct on what we're voting on.
Right. Are there, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I suppose I have it. Old business.
Old business items, 6A, PZ, 2023, SPA, and CAM, Garden Homes Derby LP, site plan and coastal area management manufactured homes, sheds at Fair Acres Park, per Connecticut general statute, section 830G, property located at 39 Whitehall Avenue, Mystic Assessor's Map 164, Lot 1, Lot 9, Zone GC60. And he Branson is, he are here to present to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, good evening, members of the commission. For the record, I'm Mark Bransc, I'm representing Garden Homes Management. This, as noted in your agenda, this is an application under 830G, which means it's not subject to zoning or subdivision regulations. But it's probably the easiest 830G that you'll ever see. The mobile home park is, as you know, already there. It was intended to be completed to extend into the area that we're proposing now, but then became legally non-conforming. As a non-conforming use, it can continue, but cannot expand. So we're basically using 830G in order to allow that expansion. 830G allows us to do this as long as at least 30% of the units are deed restricted for 40 years for affordable housing units. Of that 30%, half of them, that is 15%, have to be restricted to 80% of median income. And then the other at up to restricted to 60% of median income. And your staff report gives you the, what those actual figures on what for New London County, what those incomes are. The, I'm going to turn it over to our engineer, Steve Trinkus, who will walk you through the site plan. And after he does that, I'll show you some photos of the units, some color samples. And Steve, when you reach landscaping, I can cover that if you want to. I'll leave that to you. And then we will talk about the deep review letter that you got today. So turn it over to Steve.
Good evening. My name is Steve Trinkus. I'm a consulting engineer in an office in Southbury, Connecticut. Keith, how do I share my screen out of curiosity?
Let's see, if you put your cursor near the top, there should be a little
Share button?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On mine, it's at the bottom, by the way. Mine is at the bottom.
We've got one of both. All right. Oh, okay. Okay, does everybody see this overall site plan? Okay, great, thank you. I think we're all
Excuse me.
These electronic
Hold it, excuse me. Fred, are you joining us tonight?
No, no, I'm just here as an observer.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Leave you out. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. As Attorney Brant's pointed out, this is an existing mobile home park located off Whitehall Avenue on the west side of what is also known as State Route 27. It is bounded on the western side by the Mystic River. On the north side, there are Mystic River condominiums in the northwest corner. Kind of in northeast, on north of Michelle Lane, there's a Days Inn. The south side of the site, there's a Hampton Inn, and there's more condominiums as well as some commercial development. The proposed 10 units are kind of going in the northeast corner of the site. This is currently an open lawn area. There is an existing driveway from the park that goes out to Michelle Lane at the current time, and that will be utilized as one of the access points. And then go to the enlarged plan that makes it a little easier to see. So again, we have Michelle Lane here where my cursor is. We have the existing driveway coming in, and it goes west towards Mystic River. We're going to extend the driveway to the east to come into the existing parking lot where there is commercial development already. It's a very mild grade, about 1% to 2%. The existing sanitary sewer, which goes in a north-south direction, we're going to put a new manhole in, run our sanitary sewer to the west, and have laterals off for each of the homes. Similarly, we're going to bring a water line in from the northeast corner down, again, parallel to the sewer, connect back into the existing water line to the west of unit 121. And then each unit is variable in size. Unit 121 is 28 by 48. Units 123, 125, 127, 129, and 131 are 28 by 40 foot. And the ones on the south side, the new driveway, 126, 24, 122, and 120 are 24 by 44 with the exception of 126, which is 24 by 40. There are two sets of precast stairs. These are heavy-duty PVC stairs to provide access. There is a concrete slab, and the unit is elevated above the ground. Each unit has a 20 by 20 parking area for two cars. The roof drains will be directed to an individual cul-de-sac system for each lot. We did a series of deep test holes out here, and we confirmed the the NRCS soil mapping of very well-drained sandy soils. The cul-de-sacs were designed for two inches of rain from the roof areas. The runoff from the driveway and the two of the parking areas will be allowed to just occur sheet flow into the lawn area where it will simply infiltrate into the ground. To request of your town engineer, we modified the grading a little bit. He was concerned that on the existing driveway, there was a natural low point that we'd pond water there. So we put in a yard drain here. It will run out to another yard drain, then run to the east, and then tie into a catch basin on Michelle Lane. This way, there won't be any ponding on the property, you know, that may not infiltrate, say, if everything was frozen. We have an erosion control plan with a siltation fence along the perimeter of the site and a construction limit fence on the south side, because there's no grading being done in that area. We submitted a full drainage report, which your engineer has reviewed and signed off on. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And let me go, actually, let me go to the landscape plan before I forget that. There's site landscaping. Well, this sounds a bit more, there are some dogwood trees being proposed between some of the units on both sides. And then each of the units, there is a typical landscape plan in the front of the stairway consisting of azaleas, green arborvitae's, and two types of holly. You have to have a male and a female holly to have them be happy together. We also showed some of the existing pine trees on the site, which will be removed, and other trees with the heavy X's. There is already a long line of white pines of various sizes along the north side of the site between the lawn area and Michelle Lane. Only one of those trees will come out, and that's to facilitate the connection with the drainage system on Michelle Lane. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Aye.
I have one question.
Go right ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. That's very helpful. Chuck Sheehan, because of the separating distance between the structures, is fire suppression required?
The, the, the fire chief for the Department has reviewed these plans and did a report. He's satisfied with the access. He wants to, he wanted to be sure to clarify, and now it's my cursor on here. Wanted to be sure to clarify that, that we connect out to the driver, which we do. There's no barrier there. And then he also asked for no parking signs on both sides of the new driveway, which, which is fine with us. We have two parking spaces per unit already, and there will be no curb. So if someone wanted to pull over, they, they could do that. So the, but the fire chief has reviewed, and he is satisfied with the access. I want to just add one other thing, too. I said 30% of the units are required to be deed restricted. We are doing four, however. So we're doing four out of 10, so two at 60% and two at 80%. I just made the math come out easier. And this area does have city, but for fire purposes, this does have city, city water, of course.
Okay, so thank you, Mark. That, that's helpful. And I did look at the, the fire chief's report. But the question is, is fire suppression required within the unit? Sprinklers?
I don't think so, no. Not, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. I, I think that should be reviewed by the building official. I don't think it holds up anything tonight. But, but because of the close proximity, it, it may be a requirement. I'm not saying it is, but it may be. And, and it needs to be looked at closely.
Certainly if the fire code requires it. Oh, Mr. Friedman, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Richard Friedman. I'm, I'm with Garden Homes. I'm the president. Fires, sprinklers are not required in manufactured homes in Connecticut. We've actually replaced a number of the homes since we purchased the Fair Acres a couple of years ago, and none of the homes were required to have sprinklers.
Thank you. And I think as long as the building official agrees with that, that's fine. You know, but it should, it should be looked at carefully.
We have to pull, yeah, we have to pull a permit for every home, in any case, with the, with the building department, so, yeah.
I would just also note, as far as the landscaping is concerned, we did have two meetings with the ADRB. Last night, they did vote unanimously to recommend approval. It was a very good process with them, by the way. We, they had some very good ideas about landscaping. And as Steve indicated, we have, because these are really single-family homes, people do a lot of their own gardening and landscaping, but ADRB wanted us to have a, a basic level that included a flowering tree, and that's the kusa dogwood, basically one per every two units. And, and the shrubbery that you saw there, mix of flowering and evergreen shrubs. They will give each unit a, a good, a good look. Let me share my screen at this point. And I'm going to show you. You, let's see here if I can get it to go where I want it to go. My computer, you can do this. Okay, there we go. Can you see this? Can, can you, will I
No.
Okay, hang on. All right, let's try this. Okay, now.
It's just
Okay, good, good, all righty. This is, these, these are based on the same units that we'll be using here. But these are photographs from our new mobile home park in Oxford. As you can see from the site plan, there's two different orientations that the buildings could have. It can be the short side to the road or the long side to the road. This upper left is short side to the road. They have that, that, that front porch, that covered porch feature, and the sort of bay window look here. The, the picture below, that shows you what several of them look like in a row, and again, that's, that's from Oxford. One of these you'll notice about these plans, some mobile home parks use what's called skirting. It's, it's a, it goes between the bottom of the floor and the ground, and it's just to recover. We don't do that. We bring the siding all the way to the ground, which gives a very nice finished, finished look to the home. There's, then you can see the long side to the road. Again, you have that bay window look in those, and, and and in this case, let's see, the, you see that, that gable end facing, facing the street. So those are the two different orientations that you, that you have. You, I'm sure you have this in your pack. We do have the floor plans for each of those units. And I won't spend time on those unless you're really interested in them. One of the questions that the ADRB asked about was the color selections. These are the colors that are available from the manufacturer. The check marks indicate the ones we propose to use. You can see there's both standard and upgrade. We are using some of, of both of those categories. We tried to get some variety here. So for example, we didn't pick both flint and gray, because they're kind of similar. We didn't pick almond and cream, because they're kind of similar. So we, we tried to get some variety. This pale blue was clay, I guess, like a light brown, the cream, the flint, just a gray, all of a very light green, white, and then for some contrast, the deep, the deeper blue, the, what they call bayou and brunch, which I guess is like a charcoal and a Hampton red, like a barn red, and then shadow, which is again, like a dark gray. So those are the, the colors that, that, that we're looking at. I want to turn to the DEP report, which I know you just got today. And I'm going to deal first with the question of the dock. The deep letter tells you that there was a violation of a, a dock placed in the Mystic River without permits, and says that as of 2020, aerial photos, it was still there. This, this perplexed us because Garden Homes bought this park in 2019, and there was no dock there. And there was no dock there this summer. We never put it in. So we couldn't understand how it was possible for DEEP to say that there was a dock there. One of the things that we found in our files, this is a stop, a copy of the compliance statement from the people we bought the park from, saying that the violations were corrected on November 17th and 18th of 2018, and noting the docks and floats were not installed by the owner. They were done without consent, presumably by a tenant. So we said, okay, if they were removed in 2018, and they weren't there when we, when we bought it, and we haven't put them in, why are they there? Here's a photo from today. And another one from today. And as you can see, there is no dock. The dock you see here is the condominiums down river. That's not us. This is our frontage.
Excuse me, I can't see any photos.
Yeah, Mark, there's no
Yeah, your screen's grayed out.
Is it breaking up? You, I mean
No, it's just grayed out. I think you might be on the wrong
It's all pixelated, Mark. It's just grayed.
Let me see if I can says I'm sharing screen.
Well, there's nothing on it.
All right, let's see if I can fix that. I'm trying, trying to find the All right, let's see. Wait a minute. You can still, obviously, you can still share. That's funny, because
It also says we're viewing your screen, Mark, but we just don't see anything.
Just don't see anything. All righty, let me try
If it's a photo, Mark, the file may be too large to share.
Oh, oh, perhaps, because you could see the other the other stuff. Well, let me try, let me try something else. How about, can you see this? An aerial photo?
Nope.
No.
No aerial photo. I have no idea why this is happening. Because the aerial photo, you should certainly be able to see.
If you stop your share and then start it again, that may
Let me give that a try. Stop sharing. Okay, I'll try to share. Is that working?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, good, good. Okay, well, the, I was just showing you the photos. Let's see if that, that comes through.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So there's no, no, no dock. And we finally figured out what was going on here. Actually, it's Mr. Daley, who's on this call, who's in-house counsel for Garden Homes, who figured this out. This is the latest aerial photo you can see on Google Earth. It's the one that DEEP must have looked at, because it's the latest one there is. And there's the dock. If you look at the little, the red circle here and down here, you see the image date is 4/20/2000, is 4/2018. So DEEP's view of what they thought was a 2020 aerial is not. It's a 2018 aerial. So in fact, we do not have a dock. We did not install a dock. If we do install a dock, we will, of course, seek the necessary permits. All right, let me get that. Oops. Stop sharing, okay? The, the other question raised by DEEP was public access. They point out that this use is not water-dependent, which is correct. But what I would point out from the site plan is that we're not changing anything along the water. I will tell you that we did consider adding units at the west side of the property and, and, and decided not to specifically because of the water-dependent issue. So the use of this property along the water is not being changed, is already existing. And the only changes we're making here are nowhere near the river. So we don't feel that, that, that public access is even required. I think the DEP is wrong as a matter of law. We are proposing no use along the water. And also, as noted in your staff report, these are basically common driveways, and it is simply not suitable for public access. The, the, these are, these are 16 to 18-foot wide roadways. People, you know, people occasionally park on them, and it's just not, we don't have the parking for a, a public boat launch, and it just isn't, isn't a suitable location. And it being at 830G, we're not required to either. So we respectfully disagree with DEEP concerning public access. This just is not a, a good location for a public boat launch.
Thank you, Mark.
So I, I, that's, I think that's all I've got, unless commissioners have questions.
Any questions at this time? Keith? Can I have you
Sure.
jump in?
Sure. So the, the decisions here are a decision on the site plan approval and the coastal area management application. As Mr. Brant's noted, the ADRB did unanimously recommend approval last night after this came back a second time and met their comments. This is subject to the WPCA's moratorium, which should be up in June, but that doesn't affect the commission's approval of the application. Let's see here.
We, we, we were aware of the moratorium. We know we can't build until that relief line is done.
As the commission knows from previous applications, it is an 830G application. So it really can only be denied for clear health and safety reasons that can't be stipulated away and that sort of override the need for affordable housing in town. As far as the recommended stipulations here, there are a few. I'll read them here. Number one is that prior to the issuance of any permits, final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded. Number two, final plan shall be revised to the satisfaction of the town engineer. And there were only a couple very small items that the town engineer still had. And number three, the final plan shall include assessor's map, lock, and lot number, and running district boundary between GC60 and GBR 130. Number four, construction is subject to the WPCA's moratorium on increasing sewer flow to the Mystic Plant. Number five, the applicant shall post an erosion sedimentation control bond. And I won't read the whole standard language for that. And number six, fair circles shall remain fully accessible, and no parking signs shall be added to both sides of the road extension. These are the comments that the old district had here. Police commission reviewed this. They didn't feel there were any public health issues or traffic issues. And, you know, I think I have to concur about the public access here. You know, when you look at the coastal, coastal area management statutes, it does talk about it being an adverse impact if water depend they're going away, or if could be a water-dependent use is being proposed for something else. To me, it doesn't seem like filling in the remainder of the site with amounts to that. And it is an affordable housing application which, you know, might count for something bad, too. And, yeah, those are only my, only comments here.
Do the members have any discussion on any of these comments?
This is Ben.
Yeah.
If a dock were to be put in the future, would the applicant consider having public access at that time?
I, I, I think the answer is no, Commissioner. The, the, the only way to reach that ramp with, with trailered boats would be right in, right between, right in front of these people's houses on an 18-foot driveway. And I know there are other launching ramps in the area. I mean, I, I have a boat myself in Mystic, and it just doesn't seem to us a suitable location. There's, like I said, these are, these are common driveways with people living on both sides.
Right.
And, and the houses are close to the road. So, I mean, we, we would want it to be for the use of unit owners only.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is Chuck. I'm not going to include as an additional condition that the building official review the NFPA requirements. My comment with regard to sprinklers wasn't the fact that these the fact that these are manufactured homes. It's that they're so close together. And um, and NFPA uh, may may speak to fire suppression in these units. I'm not, I'm not certain on that. Uh, I'm not gonna tell the building official how to do his job. He knows how to do it very well, but but I, just like my comment noted in minutes uh, for emphasis, I'm not gonna make it a condition because I'm I'm not certain that it is a requirement.
Thank you. Sir, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I I move uh, that this application be approved, subject to the conditions that uh, are are were enumerated enumerated by Keith. Um, do we have to, do we have to move the CAM application first? Or can we put them together?
We can put them together.
Okay, then then it it applies to both approvals then.
Do I hear a second?
Second to motion. This is Ben.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Lynn, you with us? We lost Lynn. Lynn, are you longer with us?
Well, she's here, looks to be muted. And I can't unmute her.
Oh. Okay. We're not doing well tonight. My picture's not working.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can anyone hear me now?
Yeah.
I I uh, approve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much, members of the commission. We'll do you proud.
Thank you.
All right, Ben, it's your job. You get paid a lot for this.
I think I might have read it once already, but here we go. First one to the penal statute in the state of Connecticut, provision of eighteen fifty and all amendments there too, and first one to the zoning regulations for Stoneington, Connecticut. Planning and zoning commission hereby gives notice that will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty at seven PM by virtual meeting on the following application. EZ two zero zero nine SUP and CAM Mason's Island Company and Mason's Island Property Owners Association. Eagle City, special use permit in coastal area management site plan review applications to accompany future zoning permit application for construction of a single-family residence with onsite septic system, driveway, retaining walls, and related site improvements. Property located at Great Marsh Road Mystic, assessors map one eight zero, block two, lot thirty-six F in Great Marsh Road. Private right-of-way zones RA twenty and RC one two zero.
Uh, this is a continuation from the opening and closing we did last meeting. Uh, the way the public hearing will work, we'll hear from the applicant and all those in favor. Then we'll hear from anyone opposed. And then we'll hear from anyone who just has general comments on the application. And then if there's needed for rebuttal, the applicant has the right to rebuttal, followed by the uh, planning staff. The applicant go ahead at the present time.
Good evening. My name is Paul Biscuti. I'm a professional engineer with the firm of LaRro Engineering Associates uh, in their Groton office. Um, and we prepared the plans before you this evening. Um, as a matter of housekeeping, um, for the, for the record, I want to note that the mailings uh, for the certified mailings, um, receipts were submitted to the town on November sixteen, twenty twenty. And beyond that, I'm gonna provide you with a brief presentation of this project. Uh, it is an approved building lot in RA twenty zone from a nineteen eighty-two subdivision on Mason's Island. And if you're familiar with Mason's Island, you know, things are done a little bit differently there. In this particular case, um, this lot, and I have a plan. I'm gonna try and share it with you folks. This will be my first attempt at doing so, so I hope this works. And you can let me know if you can see this. And I don't think I'm seeing it on the screen. So let me try another. Yeah, um, I don't think I'm able, being technically challenged that I am, to share this plan with you. So I'm hoping that you all have a a plan that you can look at while I describe it, if that's okay with you. Um, the lot itself is one point three one acres. It's uh, on Great Marsh Road, which is an unimproved uh, road owned by the Mason's Island Property Owners Association. Um, it extends off of uh, Money Point Road and goes all the way out around the peninsula to um, a terminus uh, where terminates in a dead end. Um, the lot itself is a very steep lot. Um, it exhibits ledge-out crops, especially at the top, and at several locations throughout the lot. Um, and it's very shallow depth to ledge throughout the lot. Um, the owner desires to permit this uh, development now as um, so that you can essentially market the property. Um, and as such, if this is a generic house, it's not proposed for construction now. And the house actually will most likely change with regard to its footprint. But because it's a generic house and because this particular plan isn't proposed to be constructed at this time, we requested a number of waivers from the special use permit requirements. Those waivers include the architectural elevations, because we have no house drawings. Water impact study, because it's public water supply. Ah, very good, Keith. Thank you. Sanitary sewer impact study, because it's a proposed onsite septic system. Site drainage analysis, because it's a single-family residential uh, development um, with no drainage impacts to off-site areas. We had requested a a a erosion control report, a waiver from the erosion control report. Um, but indeed, we have provided one on the plans and that's noted, I believe, in Keith's report. A traffic impact study, we've requested a waiver on single-family residential home, doesn't pose traffic considerations. Similarly, archaeological study, we requested waiver. Soils report test pit data mapping. We requested a waiver, but we did indeed do a pretty extensive soil investigation out there, series of test pits, just to locate suitable soils for septic system. Three D model of the project, again, a little bit difficult when you don't have a house. Um, and similar flood hazard reports and school impact evaluation and phasing requirement, all of which we've requested waivers because of the unique situation in that this is not a project proposed for construction now, but our client seeks approval now so that they can market the property for and have, so that a future owner knows that it can be constructed. And again, things may likely change, at least with regard to the house, its size and the configuration. It's a challenging site for a single-family residential, um, because of the steepness of the slopes and the high, uh, the shallow depth to ledge. And by virtue of the fact that there's, it's off of an existing unimproved gravel road um, that around the peninsula and parallel to tidal wetlands. Um, the driveway itself is fairly steep. It's designed at a maximum twelve percent grade, which is maximum allowed by zoning regulations. And because it's so steep, it's paved. A series of retaining walls are required just to get up to the building pad site. And the building pad site itself requires knocking down six foot of ledge from the top of the knob. So it's a premium cost site development, but it's a premium parcel of property with wonderful views out over the Mystic River. On-site septic system, as I said, you can see it to the west. Um, it's at the base of the steep slope at the terminus of of the gravel access road. Um, there were, this is the only area on the site that we found suitable soils for septic system, and even at that, it can only support a two-bedroom home. Further, the soil test indicated that this septic area has to be prepared and retested for final approval by Legislite Health District. Excuse me, but they have reviewed our plans and have reviewed a guidance plan and have approved the guidance plan. So presumably, when this septic area is filled and retested, there should be no issue regarding approval from Legislite. Plan went through extensive review by town engineer, went back and forth a few times to make sure that town engineer was satisfied with the design. Um, we also had some comments from town planning staff where we made some plan revisions to accommodate uh, locations and heights of retaining walls, um, and so forth. I will tell you, um, and it's clearly stated in the CAM application, um, which requires uh, that the first inch of runoff from this site be infiltrated into the ground, or I think what the how it's stated is retained onsite, which really means infiltrated into the ground, which cannot happen here. Simply because there's not enough soil overlying ledge to accept in any infiltration. Um, and when the soil mantle is so shallow over ledge, if you were to infiltrate on a steep slope, you would likely destabilize the slope, and that's the last thing anyone wants to see when you're on a shoreline property. Beyond that, um, um, I won't go into any more detail, but rather, we'll open this up to questions if you have any questions for me.
Are there any questions at this time, Ben?
Yes, I have several. Uh, this is Ben. What are the heights of the retaining walls? You have a lot of information on your drawing, but I couldn't figure out what height they are.
Well, um.
I did look at, excuse me, I did look at your chart, and I guess one was about five feet and the others were at three feet. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'll, you know, we just, we prepared this, the height table at the request of the town engineer. Um, and so I'll just take a look at it. Um, these heights range in the neighborhood of uh, between, I would say, between two um, and roughly six feet, depending on where you are.
And and they are concrete retaining walls? They're concrete retaining walls?
No, actually, we have shown them to be what's called an M S E wall or mechanically stabilized earth, essentially of like a uh, um, a block wall with tiebacks. Uh, but we recognize, and there's a note on the plan for the detail of the retaining wall, that it requires design by a professional engineer um, for um, approval by a building inspector uh, as part of a building permit. That engineer may choose to design a different type of wall. So I can't tell you exactly what wall it would be, especially since when a new owner purchases this property, they may have a different view of what that wall wants to look like, maybe for landscape purposes or other means, ease of construction, cost and so forth.
Okay, good. Thank you. I do understand most of your waivers in the um, CAM, but there's several that I don't understand. One is not infiltrating into the intertidal flats.
Say that again, please?
No, no runoff would be going into the intertidal flats.
Um. No, I can't say that. Of course, there's gonna be runoff from this site into the intertidal flats. There's runoff from the site presently to the intertidal flats.
But you're asking for a waiver from that.
Well, I don't know that that's a part of the waiver request specifically um, on intertidal runoff to intertidal flats. I'm looking at the um, the staff report and I'm looking at the uh, waiver request. And I'm not seeing that in particular, so maybe I'm missing something.
Okay. It also says no, um, it will not result in any adverse impact. It seems to me this whole peninsula is gonna be adversely impacted.
Well, the um, the site has been designed to have very minimal, if no erosion, so we don't anticipate any sedimentation into any of the intertidal flats. Um, the septic system is designed in accordance with public health code requirements and by that by virtue of that compliance, it meets um, pollution require, uh, pollution loads for discharge of groundwater uh, to the intertidal flats. Um, this, the slopes themselves, um, most of the slopes themselves are undisturbed. The area of slope that is disturbed um, is going to be either a ledge face cut or it's gonna be armored and riprap. Either one, because there's gonna be a lot of stone coming off the top of this hill that can be used to armor the slope. When you armor the slope, you get immediate stabilization, minimize potential erosion. Um, and we have drainage coming off the um, paved driveway pitched into a rock armored swell, into a plunge pool, and then a riprap apron. We don't expect any erosion at all. So what other impacts are there? Potential nutrient loads from fertilizer, maybe? Although frankly, I don't see a lot of lawn area on this. This site doesn't permit a lot of lawn area. I'm not sure where you would get nutrient loading otherwise, other than from the septic system. And again, it's designed in accordance with health code standards. Um, maybe some people might say, well, you know, you can get bird droppings on the roof of the building. But you know, those roof drains are gonna discharge over all of those existing slopes and spread out. And whatever vegetation is there is gonna help mitigate any nutrient loads going to the tidal flats. So in our opinion, and as stated in our um, impact report, we don't accept adverse impacts. And I'll also note that the DEP, excuse me, Deep has weighed in on this um, a few times. They can't seem to make up their mind on exactly what they wanna comment on, but none of their comments stated that they anticipated adverse impacts from this development on the tidal wetland.
Right. One one last question, sir, is does the gravel access road ever flood presently?
I don't know um, for a fact myself, but I certainly suspect it does. I don't know how frequently, and that just depends on the severity of a coastal storm. If it floods, it floods from uh, from tidal surge or something along those lines.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, this is Chuck.
Yes, Chuck.
Uh, thank you, Paul. That was a very helpful presentation. Um, I I do have a couple of questions. Um, can you, the the drawing uh, that we have is 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 a little grainy and I can't, I can't read where the flood zone is, at what elevation?
The flood zone, well, interestingly enough, and this is one of the, some of the confusion that Deep had, the flood zone elevation, I believe, is elevation twelve. But the flood zone line on the map roughly runs along the elevation fifteen plus contour. So when they saw that flood elevation line, they thought some of this was in the flood zone. And then they came back and realized that the flood zone line is improperly drawn on the flood insurance maps. To answer your question, however, it's sort of difficult to see on this map and frankly, it's sort of difficult to see on all of the maps. You could look at, we could look at the survey map itself. I'm not sure if you can bring that up. Keith, because I cannot. I think on this map, you should be able to see the flood zone line. I believe it's heavily um. It's a, it's a heavy, it's a dash line. I'm not sure if you can see my cursor. But I believe it's this dash line. There's the heavy dash line, which is the zone delineation between RA twenty and RC one twenty.
Okay, I can. Okay, I can see it. Which is a Yes, I can see the enhanced, enhanced drawing. Thank you.
You're, you're welcome.
And, and that, that is the confusion I was having, because I looked at, at FEMA's record copy too, and I couldn't tell what the elevation was, so. That's helpful. Uh, is, is this site in a limo, a, a limited uh, wave action zone?
Um, I don't believe so. We are certainly aware of limo requirements to be plotted on our survey maps, and we do not show it here. I do not believe it's in a limited um, wave zone, and if you were familiar with its location, you'll, you would understand why.
Okay, uh, because if it were, uh, you know, adjacent to such steep slopes, I would have concern about the slopes being destabilized from wave action. Because they, once they start to slip on a, a slope this steep, you could get a lot of movement.
Yes, I, I uh, I would agree with that. Um, but I will point out that this um, well, this, this property's been here for an awful long time, but the building lot itself has been here since nineteen eighty-five. And I've been on this site, all over this site, up and down. Um, and I haven't seen any evidence of any erosion along the shoreline at all. Indeed, the tidal flats seem to be very stable. The gravel road itself, no erosion, and certainly no erosion on the slopes of the uh, of the lot itself, even though they are steep slopes. And, and I think primarily because there's not much soil to erode, frankly. It's mostly ledge. Um, um, but I don't, I, so I don't, I don't think it's a limo zone, and I don't think this area is subject um, to high velocity waves that would cause destabilization of the slopes.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank, thank you, Paul. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions at this time? Anyone else like to speak in favor of this application? Is anyone opposed to this application?
Uh, so this is Keith Brynes. Uh, for anyone out there, don't forget to unmute yourself before you speak.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ben Tamski. Um, just one comment really. I'm, I'm not familiar with this application. I haven't followed it, and I wasn't really prepared to speak on it tonight, but um, from my past experiences, just seems to be kind of a backwards process to be you can uh, approval for sort of a conceptual plan for marketing the property. Uh, knowing that what's proposed won't be built, and the applicant will be back for something else in the future. Just seems to open yourselves up for a lot of problems down the road. Um, so maybe you can enlighten me, but I'm just not, not familiar with that, that type of process. Thank you.
May I, may I address that?
Sure.
Um, I think um, the only thing that could possibly change on this, on the site itself is uh, the house itself, and maybe the type of retaining wall that they may choose to build. But the fact is that there's only one way to get up to the top of that ledge knob, and that's with it knocked down at six foot, and that's as the, the alignment we've shown on that driveway that cuts across the slope. Now, I will say that if a future owner wanted to knock the ledge knob down another six feet to twelve feet, then there would be more ledge excavation, but the driveway would be less steep. And the retaining walls, uh, you probably, and I know for a fact, because we looked at it, you would lose um, at least one of the retaining walls and a good portion of a second retaining wall. So um, but at the expense of an extensive ledge excavation. So my point is, is that the only thing that really could change here is the house itself and the type of retaining wall. The alignment of the driveway is pretty much fixed, because it's the only way you can get up to the top of the, top of the hill.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this application? Any general comments? Uh, Keith?
Sure, so we did get comments from other um, departments on this. Um, as Mr. Biscuti said, the town engineer comments on this in the plans were um, met his uh, met his review. D E P comment. Um, one of the things they talked about is whether the exist I've um, we, you can see where my cursor is, is an existing gravel drive around the tip of peninsula, if that could be turned into a vegetative buffer, because it's not being used anymore. Uh, but the applicant's response is that they're gonna need the gravel drive to get to the system, and it's the only way to get to the septic system, because it's at such a different grade from the house. So that really wouldn't be, really wouldn't be possible there. Um, and D E P noted um, that uh, hopefully the town engineers reviewing the adequacy of the erosion and control measures, which has been part of his review. Um, his comments did address the erosion and sedimentation control measures. Uh, the decisions on this tonight are the um, decision on the coastal area management application, decision on the special use permit waivers requested, and the special use permit application itself. Um, the recommended stipulations here are number one is the language for an erosion and sedimentation control bond. Uh, number two is just at the, prior to the issuance of the zoning permit, final sign by the commission and recorded. Um, and I should note, as far as the, the house itself, uh, you know, the commission doesn't really get into the size or appearance of the house, as long as it meets the zoning regulations. Uh, so it seems like the important things here are what is presented in this application. Um, and of course, when they do apply for a zoning permit, you know, that'll have to meet all the zoning requirements. It has to meet the height limits um, and the other requirements there.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Any other questions from the board at this time? Ryan?
Hello, Mr. Chairman, I'm good. Thank you.
Um, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing at this time?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All, all of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Do I hear a motion on this application?
Um, I'm sorry, Lynn, we're not hearing you.
Lynn? You can't see me and you can't hear her.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not gonna mute my phone again, guys, because I think there's like a, a delay, so.
Sure.
How long?
I'll just be very quiet.
Do I hear a motion on this application?
Do we wanna take them in three separate?
Votes? Yeah, why don't, why don't we, Ben?
Okay, I'm making a motion to approve the CAM.
Second? Any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Who's opposed? You?
Me, Ben.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the waivers as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Alright.
Make a motion to approve the S U P section with stipulations as presented by Keith.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Motion passed. Well, it, and from the further business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the third further business, we have no new applications in the works. No new applications came in today. Uh, so we will not have the first meeting in January, because we have nothing to do unless we want to sit and discuss something. Um, and at the present time, we'll have the second meeting in January. Probably for administrative reviews, Keith. That's about it, isn't it?
Uh, so far, yeah.
We wouldn't have any no public hearings in the, in the works.
No, no.
It seems to me COVID has slowed things right down, and something's happening.
Yeah.
All right, just, just for awareness, so there's no meeting on January fifth?
Right.
And the next meeting is on January nineteenth, right?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Just a regular meeting, no special meeting in January.
Okay, okay, I just, I just wanna mark my calendar so I'm on board.
Is Fred still on? He leave.
He is still here.
Fred, you got this to get that?
Uh, yes, I did, sir.
Okay, so we'll see you the nineteenth of January.
Alright.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Yeah, happy holidays.
Thank you, you too.
And happy new year, and see you all next year. Let's hope.
See you next year.
Happy new year.
Hi, y'all. Thank, thank you, Keith.
Bye, thank you.